Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We've got a pretty important agenda tonight, a packed agenda, so we're going to jump right in with our first item. Item A is Mayor's Minute and comments from the rest of the council. Are there any comments from the council?
Yes, I just wanted to commend Discover Bristol on a fantastic event that was downtown Bristol this past Saturday, and I don't know if they're in here or they might have been or they're still outside, but it was another sold-out event that brought a lot of people to Bristol and a lot of people to our community, and I just wanted to tell them, great job on that.
City manager comments?
Yeah, council, tomorrow, Company Conley and Associates will begin the Sonic Drilling for the thermocouples at the landfill, and during this time that they're drilling, which will occur between now and the middle of December, there may be an increased odor from the landfill due to the fact of the drilling, and I just want to let the members of the community know that the odors may increase for a period of time while we're installing thermocouples in the landfill.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items, and it looks like everybody who signed up did sign up for an agenda item, so we'll skip right ahead to the adoption of our agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda with the following changes. I move that we table item two, the special use permit for Randolph Street until our next scheduled meeting, and that we add, under item G, closed session, a closed session for legal matters.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt our agenda with the following changes stated. Clerk, please call to roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Okay, moving into our regular agenda, the first item is discussion of proposed resolution for a zoning ordinance in the city of Bristol to protect unborn life, and we'll move into public comment. I do want to go ahead and call up the first person, but just a quick reminder of the House rules, how the council chamber normally operates. When I call your name for public comment, if you'll come up to the microphone here in the front, if you'll please state your name and your address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone, when you begin speaking, the green light will come on on the table. When your time is almost up, the yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will come on. So everybody does have three minutes. We do ask you to be courteous of your time and everyone else's, and also, if you are a member here of a group and want to put forth one person to speak for the group, that is fine too, but I'll go through the list that I have them here in order of who all has signed up, beginning with Dr. Allen Roberts is the first person. Dr. Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, to the fellow members of this city council, I'm Allen Roberts. I'm a resident at 1834 Overhill Road here in Bristol, Virginia, and I also serve as the pastor of Euclid Avenue Baptist Church here in our city. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of this proposed resolution. One of the reasons I wish to do so is because I'm convinced the crucial issue before all of us is this: We have the opportunity to choose to embrace and nurture a culture of life within our city, or we will choose to allow a culture of death to impose itself upon our city. The well-known Irish-British statesman of the late 1700s, Edmund Burke, is credited for having made the following statement: "The only thing necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." I'm confident that each of you sought the seat you hold tonight as a member of this city council, based upon the motivation to make a positive difference in serving the citizens of Bristol, Virginia. I believe that by supporting and passing this proposed resolution, this is one of your most pivotal opportunities to do just that. Please, may we join together to help protect and defend the lives of the unborn. In an unwavering spirit of oneness, may we choose to establish and nurture a culture of life within our city and our region. By supporting and implementing the proposed resolution, I believe we can take a firm step together in nurturing a culture of life and hope for both our city and our region. Within each of your minds, there are probably a number of ramifications tied to this decision which you feel compelled to consider. That's what good leaders must do. But please consider how King Solomon was able to simplify the tough decisions of life, to cut out the noise and the clutter of those types of decisions. In the Book of Proverbs, he says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge; the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom." And then, out of his own search for the meaning and the purpose of life, at the end of Ecclesiastes, Chapter 12, he made this statement. He concluded that the whole conclusion of this matter, of what is the purpose and the meaning of life, he said, "Fear God and keep His commandments, for this is man's all." In closing, I wish to leave you, the members of our city council, with a final thought on this crucial issue. It is not what a lawyer or a politician tells me I may do, but rather what a God-given moral conscience, God-honoring common sense and reason, truth, and justice tell me I ought to do. Together, let us choose a God-honoring culture of life for our city, for our region, by supporting and passing this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. The next person that signed up is Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Jeff?
Carrico.
Carrico? Mr. Jeff Carrico. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Thank you very much. I'd like to express my appreciation to the council for your willingness to hear us this evening, not only that, but your service all year long, your dedication, your commitment. We appreciate it very, very much. I'd like to speak to the value of life and the decision that it will impact. Life is the essence of all that we are, and in my experience as working as a minister, the value of life is what has really been my motivation. I have worked with homeless. There's no return there other than the value of life. I've worked with food pantries. There's no return there other than the value of life. I've worked with very wealthy individuals, but I've tried very hard to give the same respect to each individual because of the value of life. It concerns me that I see a lack of valuing of life in our society, civility among people, just human kindness, speaking, respecting, just respecting the inherent value of each individual, and I very much want the city of Bristol to extend that to the unborn. Life. Where does life come from? Where is the beginnings of all of our lives? Infancy, pregnancy. We have an opportunity to make a bold move, to say as a city that we understand and respect this incredibly important idea of life. I am very much in support of this resolution. I thank you for hearing my voice, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrico. The next person that signed up is Father Chris Hess.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak about this. My name is Father Chris Hess. I live at 970 Chester Street. I'm the pastor of St. Anne's Church on Euclid Avenue. I'm the guy that people expect to be in here waving a Bible and preaching about the evils of abortion and so forth, which is something I do believe, and I definitely believe very much in the value of human life. But the reason I came to speak tonight is because you don't have to agree with anything I believe to see that what's happening right now is not good for this city. A little over two weeks ago, on October 9th, there was a journalist in my church from Sweden. Yes, I have her contact information if anyone wants to verify that. She spoke with a member of my staff, saying that she lives in Stockholm. She was staying in Washington, DC, writing an article about the United States post Roe v. Wade, and the question was put, "Well, then, why did you drive to Bristol, Virginia?" And she said, "Because everyone is talking about Bristol." She spoke to several national journalists in DC, and they all told her, "If you really want to see what's going on, you need to go to Bristol." Two days ago, I read an article in The Independent, that's a publication in the UK, and they wrote an article all about Bristol, Virginia, and this community's response to having an abortion clinic here. We're famous. Our city is becoming famous for all the wrong reasons. We've gone from being the best-kept secret in Virginia to being talked about in over half a dozen states. We know that we have a clinic operating here, somewhat small operation in our city already, but they're becoming known in Tennessee, Kentucky, West Virginia, Southern Ohio, and beyond. The women's clinic in Jackson, Mississippi, that was at the center of the recent Dobbs decision, is now publishing a list on their website of where people can go to find abortion services, and the very top of their list is Bristol, Virginia. We are becoming famous for this. I mean, what does that mean, that now we are becoming this multi-state abortion provider? Well, it means more, that they're going to be doing more than just attracting clients from out of state and greatly expanding their operation. We've already seen that they're attracting journalists from outside the state and outside the country. Soon, they'll be bringing in activists on both sides of this argument from farther, faraway states as well. People who drive the farthest are going to be the most passionate, the more chance that we'll be attracting radicalized extremists to this city that we don't need. I know many people have heard about the Jane's Revenge attacks and the firebombing and the vandalism. The more well-known we are for this, the more we're going to attract that kind of thing. So what I want to close and say, you know, the city is right now betting on a lot of things. The city very much needs things like the Hard Rock to be successful, and I dearly hope that it is. But as much as we're counting on that, do we really want this kind of drama going on right across the street from them? I wonder how the corporate leadership at Hard Rock feels about that. All I'm asking you is to just take some time to consider exactly what this means for the future of Bristol and what the future could be if we don't make the right choices for our city. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Father Hess. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Ricky Watts.
Hello. My name is Rick Watts, and I live at 266 Shipley Drive here in Bristol. I want to start out and say that I do fundamentally support a woman's right to choose, but in the end, that opinion doesn't matter, because what we're talking about is a legal decision here. We have to do what's right for the city. We have to do right for what's within the charter of the city. Within the charter of the city, I can't see any provision that would allow this to get passed the Dillon Rule for the state. Being a Dillon-rule state, Bristol is only allowed to make provisions for powers expressly granted by the state for us to control, necessary and implied from the grant and crucial to the existence of government. In its essence, this provision can't stand. Whether it's passed here today or not, it's not going to become a long-term law. At some point, it's going to get overturned, and it's going to be tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars of lawsuits and challenges and court cases that we can't afford for the city for something that can't fundamentally be passed, because it's not legal within the bounds of the state. Whether you agree with abortion or not, it is legal in the state of Virginia. So that would be the avenue to challenge the legality of abortion in Virginia, not within the confines of the city. There is a host of cities that have had the same challenge since the Dobbs decision. Cities from Alexandria to Waco have fought this exact same decision. In the end, it comes down to the same thing every time. The city does not have the mandate or the charter to make this decision. So there is nothing that can come out of this if it's passed, other than the financial burden that it's going to place on the city, because Indian, if it's passed, it's going to be a gesture. It's going to be something that's done for publicity or for noise, but it's not going to become a long-term law. If the state makes abortion illegal, it's not needed, and as long as it's legal within the state, it's not going to be a valid, you know, valid decision within the city. The last thing that I would leave you with is just, if you decide that this is something that you have to vote for, and it ends up having to be passed, I hope that we can pass it with the provision that we have our city attorney review it to make sure that it is something that could stand before the city takes on that legal fight, right? So that's going to be my ask, is if, like, I hope you do the right thing and vote against this, but if you do decide to vote for it, please add the provision that we do our due diligence as a city legally with our city attorney to decide that this is something we want to proceed with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. The next person that signed up is Willie Ellis.
I'm Willie's friend Cathy Elkins, and I have to lead him. He is visually impaired, but he's right here at the microphone. Go ahead, Willie.
Yes, my name is Willie Ellis, and I'm a citizen here at Bristol, live at 160 High Drive, Bristol, Virginia, and I'd just like to say that we stood up and said the Pledge of Allegiance, and that's liberty and justice for all. And without life, you can't have liberty and justice. And I hope that we end abortion here in this city and truly make it a good place to live.
Thank you so much, Willie. Thank you all for coming tonight. The next person that signed up is Cathy Elkins. Okay.
My name is Catherine Elkins. I live at 115 Grayble Road. I'd like to thank all the city council for their consideration in this safe zone. I think it's a thing that needs to be voted on. It affects everyone. I actually have a friend that worked for Bristol Regional, and they brought the remains of a child to him at the incinerator, and he would not have the blood on his hands. He could have lost his job, but he did not. It's something that needs to be addressed, and it's something that just, the Lord made us all here. He created us, and He knows the number of hairs on our head. He knows what we did five minutes ago, and He knows what we're going to do five minutes from now, and I'd just like to thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Elkins. The next person that signed up is Crystal Biggs.
My name is Crystal Biggs, and I'm a resident of, off of, one of the communities off Randolph Street, and an employee in Bristol, Virginia, and a registered voter who votes in my city. I would like for my opposition to the proposal to be noted. Virginia state law allows for desired and needed reproductive medical services, and we cannot begin allowing personal and/or religious opinion to have a place in trying to affect these laws. Bristol has many different citizens who have different beliefs, and we cannot and will not sit by and let one group's religious views influence our laws at a local or state level, as though we have not established separation of church and state. Those who bring this proposal that do not live in our city, as well as opposition from those who do live here, will not have any medical services they do not agree with forced upon them. So long as that is the case, we have no need to entertain anything going against the law of the city or state voted on by its residents. I do not need to bring a proposal to the city council to make Bristol, Virginia, a sanctuary city for those seeking reproductive health care rights, as the state of Virginia and being a Dillon-rule state has already done so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. The next person that signed up is Mr. Kevin France.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council, city manager, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Some 34 years ago, I sat for you all seated now. I know what you go through. I'm a resident of 2100 Osborn Street. My name is Kevin France. I do live in the neighborhood where the clinic is located. Without any enumeration on a sign, the only way we know it's there is that every Wednesday and Friday, there are pro-life supporters and there are pro-choice supporters there. I believe, as a Christian, that life begins at conception. As has already been stated by the many pastors and Father Chris who spoke, Jesus, the Lord knows us when we were in the womb. He knew us. And we need to respect the sanctity and the preservation of life. I believe that Bristol, Virginia is making great progress. I love our city. I really do. Mr. Mayor, I know I sent you a little seething email a while back about it when I found out about it, and understand, I get emotional on these things. But last night, my wife and I came downtown to Bristol to eat. We were able to stroll up and down State Street, had a wonderful time. We were safe. We love our city. You've got right now the Hard Rock Hotel going up, which, who knows what's going to happen to Bristol, Virginia when that happens? You're making a lot of progress. We have Bristol Motor Speedway on the Tennessee side of town. We have all the different things for this city to do, from Rhythm &amp; Roots to last weekend's Oktoberfest, to all kinds of events. Our city does not need to be known as a gateway to abortion. Just plain and simple. If we allow it to be freely dictated, then abortion clinics can be set up on Lee Highway, on State Street, wherever, and there's not much you can say about it if you don't do something with this amendment. I ask you to consider it and to consider the sanctity of life. Each one of us in this room has held a newborn baby. Each one of us is loved on a newborn baby. I had a nephew, when he was born, weighed two pounds. My sister-in-law was at the time, said, "Oh, you won't be able to carry him to term at all." He's now a successful CFO of a Fortune 500 company in California. His wife is a doctor, and he's 6'9". And, you know, he survived, and he lived. I ask you, please, please, to consider this amendment. I appreciate all you do, and I'll leave you with this word from Scriptures, "If the Lord doesn't keep the city, then the watchman waketh in vain." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. France. The next person that signed up is Todd Cruzenberry. Mr. Todd Cruzenberry. Is he outside? He's outside. We'll check on him, and we'll move on to the next person temporarily. Mr. Charles Humphrey. Mr. Humphrey.
I don't have a lot to say. Just want to help remind us all that if you look throughout history, you can make a distinction between civilizations that are brutal or civilizations that are progressing to goodness for mankind based upon how they treat children. If you look at history and you see the most brutal times in history, there was infanticide or killing of children in the womb, and then whenever there is a progress toward where there is healthy and flourishing nations, it's usually transitioning to how they view children and view the family. Well, as a Christian and as a pastor, it says in the Scriptures, James 1:27, that true religion is to visit the widow and the orphan in their distress. There is no other greater distress for an orphan than one that would be in the womb of their own mother and their life be threatened and to be abandoned. And we do not want to be considered, in the eyes of God, more than anything else, but also in the eyes of history, as being a place of brutality, where people would come here specifically, that would actually flee from more civilized places, to come so that they may be able to not only make orphans, but to destroy them. And so it is my prayer and is my plea to you all to consider this amendment, that we would be able to receive the blessing of God by doing what is true religion and standing for those who are those who have no speech and ability to speak for themselves, and to be those who protect the innocent. And so I beg your mercy in this, for those children, and also the mercy for our communities around here, that we would not receive the wrath of God for how we respond to this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Humphrey. Mr. Todd Cruzenberry.
Council, thank you. I'm Todd Cruzenberry. My address is 135 Cherry Lane, Bristol, Virginia. I've been a pastor in Bristol, Virginia for, wow, a long time, 12 years, till we moved to Bristol, Tennessee, eight years ago. Still live in Bristol, Virginia. I love the city I live in. Enjoyed conversation with a lady from Northern Virginia today at the Burger Bar, and appreciated her coming in and told her what a wonderful place it was to live. I hope that motto don't change, because I hate for it to read all day, "A wonderful place for babies to die." I really don't want to see that. I don't think you do either, and I want to thank you for your patience today. I know this crowd is very intimidating, and you've listened to a lot of people speak, so thank you so much for taking the time. And normally, when I've spoken before city council, everybody has turned and talked and this and that. You all have been focused, and I want to thank you for that. I appreciate that very much. I'm just going to give you one verse of Scripture. The pastors have done a good job. There's no use in repeating what they've done, but Jeremiah 1:5 does say, "Before I formed thee in the belly, I knew thee; and before thou comest forth out of the womb, I sanctified thee, and I ordained thee a prophet unto the nations." That tells me that even before a baby's born, God has a plan for it, and I don't believe the plan is for someone to abort that child. But what I fear the most is that Tennessee, we know, has abolished abortion. We are the closest city to Tennessee. People who want to keep that industry going are going to come to the closest point, so it's far less for people from Tennessee and other states to travel. We are the midpoint, Tennessee, Kentucky, North Carolina, you know. So my fear is, is that we want to have an influx of abortion centers coming to our area. We already have one that's moved here, as you know, relocated from Bristol, Tennessee, and every, every week, we see picketers as we go by on both sides of the road. We're going to see that again on this side of the town, and every time an abortion clinic goes up, you're going to see that. We have really just got our heels into tourism. Our tourism industry is really flourishing right now, and I believe it's really going to hurt that. I think it's going to harm it. I think it's going to halt it. I believe people will be intimidated to come here and drive down the road when they know that that's what they're going to see. I would encourage you to take a look at Bristol, Tennessee's call-out for police to that abortion clinic, and you can probably get a good picture of what the call-out's going to be here for each one we have established. It's not a friendly place, unfortunately, but folks, I want to thank you again. I'm not going to rehash what they said. Just be smart, be wise. It is in your legal interest to do this. If you'll go back and look at the Supreme Court's findings recently, it gives you the liberty to do what we're asking you to do tonight. So do research the law and see that you can do it, by encouraging to go ahead and pass this now and do what's right for our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cruzenberry. The next person that signed up is Mr. Josh Hetzer.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is Josh Hetzler. I'm legal counsel with the Family Foundation and the Founding Freedoms Law Center. I had the honor to assist Councilman Wingard in drafting this resolution. I want to just leave you, I'm sorry, 707 East Franklin Street in Richmond. I want to leave you tonight with really just one message, and I'm glad the Dillon Rule has been brought up, because the message I want to leave you with is, this council has the authority to pass this resolution. And I want to read a couple of places in the law for you so that you can see, and I think as you read, hopefully you've read the resolution, it really speaks for itself, but some of the things is, the city charter gives you the authority to do this. The city charter of Bristol states- The city charter of Bristol states that "The city shall have the power to adopt ordinances, among other reasons, to define, prohibit, abate, suppress, and prevent all things detrimental to the health, morals, aesthetics, safety, and convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of the city; and furthermore, to do all other things whatsoever necessary or expedient to promote or maintain the general welfare, comfort, education, morals, peace, government, health, trade, commerce, or industries of the city or its inhabitants." That's what your city charter says. Now let's look at what the Virginia State Code says. 15.22283 says that zoning ordinances shall be "for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Such ordinances shall be designed to give reasonable consideration to each of the following purposes, among them, to facilitate the creation of a harmonious community, and to protect against one or more of the following: loss of life and health." Virginia Code 1522284 directs that zoning ordinances and districts shall be drawn and applied with reasonable consideration for the protection of life. One more in the Virginia Code I'll point out to you. 1521113 says, "A municipal corporation may regulate or prohibit the conduct of any dangerous, offensive, or unhealthful business, trade, or employment." You have broad authority here. But what does the Virginia Supreme Court say relative to the Dillon's rule and your ability to do this? I'll point you to Resource Conservation Management Incorporated versus Board of Supervisors in 1989. This is the current case law of the Virginia Supreme Court. I'll read from the case. It says, "We think that," by this language, the language of the code, that is, "the governing body of a locality is expressly authorized to prohibit a specific use of land. While the language does not specify a landfill in this case as one of the uses that may be prohibited, such specificity is not necessary, even under the Dillon Rule, of strict construction. Hence, we think the board acted well within its delegated power in prohibiting the use of property for landfills in this case." You can take out landfills and put in abortion. And for those reasons, I hope you will pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hetzler. The next person that signed up is Penny Ferris. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hi, my name's Penny Ferris, and I live at 9319 Mendota Road, Mendota, Virginia. And I'm on the board of Pathways Pregnancy Center, and I just want to say that when we came in tonight, we said the pledge of allegiance to acknowledge that we are one nation under God. Whether we believe it, whether we like it, we are. And our Declaration of Independence establishes that we are endowed by our Creator with the right to life. We don't have the right to take that. We don't have the right. It's always been unconstitutional. Ultimately, our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence, these are founded on God's law. They come from God's law. So it's not a religious, whether you're Catholic, Methodist, Baptist, it doesn't matter. This is the foundation of our country, and we need to go back to the foundation of our country so it can flourish again. And I know a lot of people are going to be worried about the financial ramifications of this, but our prosperity has always and will always come from God. And we will bring judgment on this city if we do not operate according to His will. When we go against His will, it brings death and destruction, and we have had well over 60 million lives lost to abortion for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ferris. The next person that signed up is Ms. Angela Bush. I usually just call you Angie.
Angie, yes, or Angelina. Thank you, Angelina Bush. I live at 19310 Stone Mountain Road, Abingdon. Thank you for this moment to talk with you. I want to point out that abortion is not healthcare. Healthcare is for healing. Healthcare is for the prevention of disease. And what we have happening here is not healthcare. Abortion is, it is the destruction of a life. It is, heartbeat begins by day 21, and so abortion stops that heartbeat and ends the life of the child. Healthcare would not do that. I also want to point out that healthcare would be helpful and beneficial to a woman, but abortion hurts women. It hurts them physiologically. There have been deaths due to abortion. It hurts them emotionally, psychologically, spiritually. This is a life and death issue, and not only for the child, but it could be a life and death issue for women who are coming to Bristol. You need to consider that, and I am hoping that you will consider that. And I am asking for you to vote for this measure to make it clear that Bristol should be a safe zone for life, for the unborn, but also for women. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bush. The next person that signed up is Ms. Burt Mask. Burt, do we have Burt here? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak my opinion. I live in Blountville, Tennessee. I don't know if you allow a comment or opinion from someone in Blountville, but if you do, I will express my opinion. I was 29 in 1972 when abortion came about. No one thought much of it at the time, and of course, we were promised that it would not be taxpayer abortion. But it did eventually evolve into taxpayer abortion. And now it is involved in something very gruesome than what it started out with. Even the governor of Virginia, the previous governor, had stated that they would keep a baby comfortable after birth, and if the doctor and the mother decided to abort, then they would end the life of this human being. Life is precious. It comes from God. My wife and I went eight years without having children. And fortunately, when I was in graduate school in North Texas, I came upon a fertility clinic where they were experimenting with different drugs. And after about six months of that experience, my wife did conceive, and even after I was off the drugs for some time, my son came about two years later. So I would consider the ramifications of abortion, especially the psychological effects it has on the mother and sometimes the father, who is not in favor of the abortion. Do what makes sense and do what God would have you to do, and follow the Scriptures because the Scriptures contain the truth where most things in this world are not the truth. And thank you for your patience in listening to my report.
Thank you so much. The next person that signed up is Reverend Ronnie Duncan. Mr. Duncan, is he in here? Here we go.
I'll say something before I make my short comments here. I was watching you all from the back. I appreciate you all paying attention to what we feel in our hearts. Thank you very, very much for that. I know you've got a tough decision to make, and we are praying for you, and God bless each and every one of you. I'm just going to make a comment about my kids, and then I'm going to sit down. I've pastored for 44 years and I've pastored some churches in this area, and I'm retired now. I had to retire because of a disability. But along that time, I ran into some cases of ladies that were going to have abortions. They came to me and said they wanted to talk to me, so we sat down and talked. And out of that, my wife and I adopted three children that were getting ready to be aborted. So we can tell you a little bit about that and what's going on as we work with the mothers. And I would say this before I go on. I appreciate Catholic charities for what they do to try to help out people that are trying to adopt, especially abortion cases. They've been really, really sweet. My first child that we saved from abortion was, his name is Jeremiah now. Jeremiah, we caught him about three days before he was going to be aborted. He has been a blessing to us. He really is. He lives in Myrtle Beach right now. He's got three children, my grandchildren, and I love them to death. Jeremiah, after he was raised, went into the Navy and made a Navy career. So that's what was going to happen to one that was going to be aborted. His name is Jeremiah. Amy came along then. I was pastoring a church in Decatur, Illinois, and, oh, it was pouring down snow the day she was born. And we had to make several trips from Springfield where we lived to Decatur to get her and bring her back, but we finally got her, and Amy has been a blessing. The first few weeks of her life, she had a coop and cough, and we thought we were going to lose her, but she is with us today. She's a nurse in Florida right now helping with the hurricane victims, and she wouldn't be here today if we had abortion. They were going to kill her, and we thank God for her and her two children. And last but not least is Benjamin. Benjamin has been a blessing. He really has. I was pastoring a church in this area here, and we ran up on Benjamin. The mom lived in Rice Terrace and worked back and forth with her. I met her at the hospital, as a matter of fact. She was going to have an abortion the next day, and Benjamin has been a blessing. He really, really has. We adopted him. He made the Army his vocation. He's been in the Army now. He's made it his life's career, and he's been a blessing too. They've got two children. They live in Phoenix, Arizona. Again, another one that would have been adopted, aborted. Folks, this is a tough decision. I know it is. But remember, the ones that are being saved, thank you all very, very much. God bless you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Duncan. Thank you. The next person that signed up is Barbara Schwartz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. My name is Barbara Schwartz. I live at 225 Stonewall Heights in Abingdon, and I come to speak in opposition to this resolution. I will leave it to the legal experts to sort out the Dillon Rule, and I know that there's plenty of data out there and studies that you can read that show you how abortion can improve the lives of women and their existing children. My concern is that to cherry pick an act which is legal and safe under Virginia law because some people find it abhorrent opens up a Pandora's Box. There are doctors in Virginia, Bristol, Virginia, that will sterilize a man or a woman at their request without expecting them to have had children first. Some people find that abhorrent. There are doctors in Bristol, Virginia that treat impotence, also treat infertility. Some people feel that those conditions are God's will as well. I don't think that we should be in the business of singling out anything that is mainstream medical practice that is safe and legal already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. The next person that signed up is, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced this, is it Nick Rowell?
Mike Rowell.
Mike Rowell.
My name is Dr. Mike Rowell. I live at 1216 Lakeview Dock Road. I've had the honor of being a physician, general surgeon here in Bristol for the last 31 years. What a blessing it's been to help maintain lives, quality of life, and serve this wonderful community. Even more importantly, I've raised two children in this community after living in Norfolk and growing up in Cincinnati, and just would like to thank each of you for your contribution and what you've done to make this the wonderful place to live that it is. We do live in scary times when you look at our schools, look at our world, and I think it's very important we take a strong stand now and do the right thing, protect our community, protect the unborn. As a physician taking oath, one of the most important things we did was to promise to do no harm. Everything I've ever learned and read for the last 40 years has said that human life begins at conception. Every embryologist, every scientific person agrees on this. That embryo has everything it needs to become a councilman, to become a mayor, to become a surgeon, to become a president, to become a pilot. Everything is in that two-cell that becomes one-cell embryo. Everything is wired into that. Human life begins at conception. When man in the past has taken on to themselves to judge the quality of human life and who human lives are worthy, we think of Hitler and the Holocaust. You think of slavery, and it just goes on and on. When we step over our bounds, step over what God has defined as human life, and take that upon ourselves, and you see the worst atrocities in our lifetime, in our world. The unborn, again, need our protection. These are lives that we need to step up. At four to five weeks, there's evidence of a human heart beating. Just a few weeks after that, the brain's working. A few weeks after that, they're sucking their thumb. Again, 10 to 12 weeks, they're starting to move around. The mothers can feel them kicking. There's been babies born at 20 to 22 weeks that survive. They're doing surgeries on babies in the uterus. 20, 22 weeks, preparing diaphragms that would not permit them to live when they were born, removing tumors, correcting abnormal heartbeats. They're taking that baby out of the womb, still receiving its circulation from the mother. I mean, is that a non-human that becomes a human that then is put back in the uterus to live a productive life? That these babies are surviving this? Again, babies are surviving outside the womb at 20 to 22 weeks. I know your job is very difficult, and I really appreciate the sacrifice you guys make in really taking this apart. And I think it is really important, again, how we define human life and what does make us human. I know it's a philosophical question, but if you, I mean, I think the key thing between all of us in humanity is that we are born in the image of God. We are born in the image of God, and God has created us. He's created this universe. And I think if you really take that in and just realize, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom, and we need your wisdom here. This is my lifetime, but I just, again, would like to thank you. I think it is important that we fear God more than we fear man. It's time we step up, protect women, give them options, and give them all the support and love they need. And I really appreciate you guys for all you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rowell. Thank you. The next person that signed up is Stephanie Atkins. The next person that signed up is Stephanie Atkins.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Atkins. I live at 175 Richardson Hollow Road in Elizabethan, Tennessee. And I am here to give you the perspective of a woman who's had an abortion. When I was 17, I found out I was pregnant and I went to my guidance counselor at school. He directed me to a phone book and gave me the number of an abortion clinic outside of my state. In my state at the current time, what, there was a law that said I had to be 18 or have parental consent to have an abortion. He directed me to go out of state to New Jersey and he excused me from school on the day of my abortion. He cashed a check of mine out of school funds for my abortion. He excused the girl that I took with me from school. And I just want to let you know that when young women and girls find themselves with an unexpected pregnancy, they are easily manipulated into doing something that they will regret for the rest of their lives. It is our responsibility and your responsibility as citizens of this nation and of this city to help them have the option to make the better decision, the decision that they won't regret for their, their whole lives, the decision to choose life. And so that I'm, that's what I'm asking you to do. Even though I don't live here, it's very important. It affects the whole region, not just Bristol, Virginia. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. The next person that signed up is James Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for allowing me to be here. My name is Joe Kearns. I'm a resident of Blountville, Tennessee, but I'm the director of Pathways Pregnancy Resource Center here in Bristol, Tennessee. But just want to share, abortion is on the hot topic since Roe v. Wade has turned. And America has long been known as the land of opportunity, where disadvantaged women make big dreams and they should be equipped with the resources and unlimited support to achieve those dreams. But to the abortion lobby, vulnerable women represent dollar signs. Indeed, that industry demeans women, pushing them into its own made-up self-version of what a successful woman can be, while withholding information from them about the impacts of the physical and psychological harms they may experience. When a woman has an abortion, it's important to remember that there are two victims in many cases. Of course, there is the unborn child, and many times there is the mother herself. She is the victim. There may be exceptions when a woman knows exactly what she is doing. And I know overwhelmingly, majority of the cases, the woman is not the perpetrator of the abortion. She is the victim. And abortion providers, they don't empower women. They think for them. That industry actively blocks women from accessing a wide range of resources to make informed decisions about what's best for their health and future. According to former abortionist Carol Everett, abortion counselors are really telemarketers who are trained to overcome objections and close the deal by making that appointment for the abortion. They are trained to reassure the pregnant girl by saying such things as, "We can take care of that problem. No one really needs to know about this." Truly, the abortion industry as a whole has created a system of death. One that seeks to remove the problem of an unexpected pregnancy by taking the life of an innocent child. Moms are preyed upon by that industry in their time of desperation and fear and confusion, and they are convinced that abortion is their only solution. And that list can go on and on right there. The abortion industry thrives by restricting women's access to healthy alternatives, loving support, and practical material resources, preying on those women to make profit and belittling women by assuming it knows what's best for them and what will make them happy and successful. Not to mention extinguishing out any potential life for that unborn child. Since Roe has been overturned, state and local legislatures as yours can pass more common sense laws. Laws protect women from those physical and psychological harms from abortion, ensure that women are fully informed of the development and humanity of their babies, and give the unborn children every opportunity for their moms to choose life for them. What we need to do today is protect the child and serve those mothers endangered by the tragedy of abortion. We need eyes to be open and hearts and minds to be changed and see that the preborn child is undeniably distinct and a precious human life from the point of conception. And I ask the city council to defend the most defenseless within this community and make Bristol, Virginia a safe zone for life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. The next person that signed up is Mr. Scott Rank. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Like name ranking serial numbers.
Yes. I see your note here. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is not something you guys went out and looked for, I'm sure. This has kind of been dropped on our city. I live at 20363 Haskell Station Road. That's Bristol, Virginia, but it's Washington County. And we're maybe 10 minutes at most from where the center's proposed to be. I could argue plenty of religious arguments, but I'd rather come at this from another angle. I do support the amendment. I think about all the fuss we make about our military. We have Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Gold Star families, presidents go meet airplanes. In all the wars that our country has ever fought, there have been about 1.1 million Since Roe v. Wade, there's been about 63.5 million abortions. That is a staggering number. When you think about all the potential of those lives. Several years ago, I was working with a high school football and wrestling team at a public school, small rural conservative community. And one day I was in the gym working out with some of the kids and the guidance counselor was in there. And he said, "Scott, do you know every Friday morning, a van pulls up in front of our high school? A group of pregnant students get on the van, go to a clinic, have an abortion, come back and lay down in the nurse's office till school's out that day, go home for the weekend, and their parents never know." Now, I'm a father of three and I have two daughters, six grandchildren with three granddaughters. And if anybody ever authorized that for one of my kids, there'd be hell to pay. The last thing I want to mention is like the lady that had the abortion said, we were part of a faith community for a while that one of the ladies in the church had had an abortion and she knew the price tag that she paid afterwards. And she started a ministry in our church for any lady that had an abortion that wanted to come in and talk about it and try to get some closure for it because there are studies you can find of the effects on women after the fact. It's a fuel for some addictions, drug addictions, alcoholism, all kinds of other escapist behaviors to try to kill the pain, medicate that pain. But we had groups and groups and groups of women that went through this course, grown ladies that it may have been years ago, but they were still suffering the effects. So I want you to weigh the human factor here, the price tag on the moms. I think about all the parents that didn't know they lost a grandchild because the parents were never informed. So you guys got a tough job and I admire you, but step up and be heroes in this case. We'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rank. The next person that signed up is Terri Brewer.
I'd like to thank you so much for hearing me. I did not think that I was going to be speaking, but as I traveled from my home today, which is 23444 Miller Hill Road, Bristol, Virginia, I could feel in my spirit the Lord say to me, "You couldn't say a word when you were 16 and you couldn't take up for what you can today." I'm a 59-year-old woman. I have been a preschool teacher and a caregiver in my home of children since I was 16 years old. I am not over it. When I was 16 years old, I became pregnant. And a doctor's recommendation to my parents was abortion. On a winter morning, they packed me up and drove me to Roanoke and took me into a clinic there. I can tell you what the room looked like. I can tell you what it smelled like. I can tell you what my nurse looked like, but the doctor never said a word to me. I drove home that day and I was not the same Terri that had arrived. I want you to understand, there is much emotional trauma. As a matter of fact, PTSD is found in a lot of us women. I'd give anything in the world if I could have taken that choice and today have chosen adoption and given that child life. I do not say this in dishonor of my parents because my parents took advice from a physician and they believed they were doing the right thing for me. But I can tell you at 59 years old, my womb still cries for that little one. I am a mother of a 38-year-old daughter who is a nurse practitioner. And I am a mother of a 33-year-old son who is an amazing mechanic. But I wonder every single day what my first child would be. I ask you with all my heart to side on the safe Bristol. I beg you to give these babies a chance to live. But I also speak to myself because I need to be there for the women who decide to bring babies into the world. And I need to give my resources as well. I thank you so much for hearing my voice.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brewer. The next person that signed up is Isha. Isha.
Yes. Difficult name.
Yes.
So, my name is Isha Yuhas. I'm at 5038 Little Wolf Run Road in Bristol, Virginia. And now, I want to address some of the legal issues because there's some doubt here as to whether you have the legal authority to do what most of the citizens in this room are asking you to do. Okay? The text of the resolution and the amendment lay out the law pretty clearly, Virginia Code, city charter, okay? I thought Mr. Hessler did a great job explaining the latest Supreme Court precedent on the issue, okay? Dillon's rule is basically a smokescreen, I think. So, I am a licensed Virginia attorney. My bar number is 45789. And if you need help defending this in court or you have legal doubts about it, I'll be happy to do pro bono work. I will do, do it on my own time. I'm happy to assist the city attorney. You want some help, want some legal research done, I am at your disposal. So, take me up on, take me up on my offer. You have my contact information, okay? So, vote your conscience because the law is on your side.
That's the last person that signed up for public comments. So we will move into the staff report and further council discussion.
Counsel, before you, the family foundation has proposed the attached resolution for the city of Bristol to consider. If passed, this resolution would then be forwarded to the planning commission for its consideration. The proposed language would alter the city zoning ordinances to prevent future medical offices from performing, performing certain medical procedures which are currently legal within the Commonwealth of Virginia. See Virginia Code 18.2-71 at SEC. The proposed language would also prevent any medical office that is currently performing certain procedures from enlarging, extending, restructuring, or structurally altering its current building. My staff recommendation is that the, this is up to council discretion, but I would recommend that the city receive a legal opinion from me. I have done some preliminary research on this matter and before you take any formal action, either by the planning commission or by city council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eads. And we'll open this up for our council discussion.
One, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This, this, this is a large crowd. We normally don't have these numbers show up, but this is one of the most important items that has ever been on this agenda. I've been on this council for over six years and this is by far the greatest and most important of all issues that has come before us because we are talking life. We have found ourselves in a situation where the surrounding states has restricted abortions. Roe v., Roe Wade has been overturned and Dobbs has opened up the door that says this is a state issue, not a federal issue. And with that being a state issue, it is my opinion that even though we are a Dillon state, the state does not dictate everything that a locality does. I believe that this council has the full authority to stop other abortion clinics from coming here. We already have one that moved across the state line. And it is my opinion that one is too many and I don't want to see a second or a third. And I am convinced that this council has the authority to set the coding, codes in And the zoning to prohibit any more from expanding and filling us with abortion clinics because you know they're going to try to come. We have Tennessee, Kentucky, West Virginia, and we are ground zero. And I'm hoping that this council sees just how important this really is. It is life or death.
All right. I'll go next. I agree with you, Mr. Wingard. I, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. This, this is very powerful with how many people are here tonight. And I know many of the pastors in the audience and it's certainly great to see you. As a Christian, I, I agree with you that life is precious. As a city council member, I also believe that we need to do our due diligence and as a city leader in getting that legal opinion to make sure as we move forward, we are making the best decisions for the city that we can make and not to cause any other lawsuits to come about or anything else. But I will say that I do agree with you. I'd like to see this move forward, but I would like to have that legal opinion just to protect our city as I'm sitting in this seat as a city council member and to see how we can move forward to approve this. I certainly want to do the right thing and I heard as Mr. Hessler and Mrs., Ms. Yuhas was talking about the legality of it, but I would like to hear from our local, from our city attorney, his opinion. And then also, as, as we refer it then to the planning commission with, with that option or refer it to the planning commission with, with the city attorney's opinion of it. But again, thank you all for coming out. It was really touching. I appreciate each and every one of your comments. I heard you loud and clear and I agree with, with what you were saying tonight.
Just to jump in since you, since you brought up that topic, not to call anyone out, but Ms. Yuhas, I don't think... Yuhas, I don't think we've ever met before, but I would like to try to speak with you and meet with you after because again, I'm not an attorney, but I'd love to learn more about legal, all legal aspects of that and our own legal opinion as well from the city side. My only question really was just about the procedure of passing an ordinance because normally when it comes to an ordinance with zoning, that does begin with the planning commission and the planning commission votes on it first and then city council will vote on it second. So, my understanding is this has not gone to the planning and I look over at the city planner, this has not been looked at by the whole planning commission as well, correct? Yet?
Correct. It goes to the planning commission, the public hearing phase, just as if, say, the zoning map amendment that's on there later, the recommendation and then yes or no approval with ordinances.
Okay.
First off, I thank you, everybody who came out. I know you're all very passionate and it's an incredible crowd. I do have a question more in detail like the mayor asked, and this might be for the city planner or for the city manager. Can you run through a timeline of roughly, you know, where we'd be as far as legal opinion, planning commission, first hearing, second hearing?
Well, I have done some preliminary research on this matter. There's a whole host of issues here as it relates to this proposed language. It's more than the Dillon rule. It also involves zoning and I think we need to be, look very careful at the statutes that are cited in this resolution. Jean, can you pull up my email? So, under the resolution language, this is a language taken directly from the resolution. It states, whereas Virginia Code Section 15.2-2283 declares that, quote, "Zoning ordinances shall be for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public and of further accomplishing the objectives of Section 15.2-2200," end quote, and that, quote, "To these ends, such ordinances shall be designed to give reasonable consideration to each of the following purposes where applicable. One, provide for adequate ellipsis, safety from ellipsis of crime and other dangers ellipsis. Three, to facilitate the creation of a ellipsis harmonious community ellipsis. And six, to protect against one or more of the following ellipsis, loss of life, health ellipsis." If you can go to the next one, Jean. The language that is cited in the resolution is not the full language of the statute. The statute under 15.2-2283, and I'm getting younger and my eyes can't see, states, "Or the loss of life, health, or property from fire, flood, impounding structures, impounding structure failure, which is a dam failure, panic, or other dangers." So, this statute is not in and of itself talking about the protection of life for zoning ordinances. It's specifying certain conditions as to what the purpose of zoning ordinances should be. And you have to look at a statute as a whole and look at the plain meaning of the language of the statute when interpreting statutes. So, go on to the next one. So, in this, directly from the code, or directly from the resolution, whereas Virginia Code 15.2-2284 directs that zoning ordinances and districts shall be drawn and applied with reasonable consideration for the protection of life. And, well, what was left out in this proposed resolution is, under that same state statute, the protection of life and property from impounding structure failures, the preservation of agricultural and foresterial land. So, the resolution, as it's presented, in my opinion, is attempting to say that it's for the protection of life in general, but it's for the protection of life from certain specified reasons based upon the plain meaning of the statute. The Dillon's rule, I can go down a rabbit hole. I've probably spent eight to 10 hours this week alone at the Dillon's rule and what we can and can't do as a city as it pertains to this. I have not made up my opinion yet based upon the research that I've done. I think the question is, when could I have an opinion ready? I think I could have the opinion ready by our next council meeting, which I think we're all thinking is going to be November 15th and I can have that ready by then. The planning commission would then meet on November 21st where they would decide whether to pass that or then they would have a joint public hearing on December 13th.
Right, yeah, there's advertising that's required. So, it usually takes about three to four weeks in between.
So, December 13th, we would have a joint public hearing with city council with the planning commission. Then it would go back to the planning commission on January, the 12th, I believe is the first meeting in January.
Third Monday, yeah, whatever that is.
So, it'd go back to the planning commission, then it would come to city council the last weekend and, or the last meeting in January for the first reading and then the second reading would be the first reading and, or second reading would be the first meeting in February.
So, my question is to the whole council is, what do we do tonight about this? Now, I for one, I want to do this. I also want two things. I want to make sure we go about it the right way. I just want to understand more on the legal side of it from all aspects and the planning commission does need to look at it as well.
Yeah. First off, way in here, thank everyone for coming. As Councilman Wingard said, in the, well, over eight years I've been on council, this is by far the largest crowd I've seen in this venue. I think we had a larger crowd once that we moved to the high school, but I appreciate everyone coming and I appreciate your comments and your concerns and I share many of them. But, you know, I just, you know, I get it. I was adopted myself. I'd love to see more people be adopted, so. But I also would love, before I take any action, I want to see a legal opinion of what we can and can't do. I don't know, may not be exactly everything that's in this resolution as it's presented. There may be ways, though, we can put some kind of restrictions. If not, what's in here is something else like we do, I think we did with the medical marijuana, you know, so many feet from this and that, you know, find ways to, if we can't do this. But I'm more than open to consider this, but first, before we take any action, I want to see the legal opinion because to me, there's a lot of issues here that I really want to see and that, before we take anything, that would be my recommendation.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we pass this resolution as presented and we'll let the legalities be worked out in planning.
Can you clarify that?
I'll make the motion that we pass this resolution as presented and send it down to planning and the legalities can be worked out in planning and then sent back to us.
But, so, my only question is, can we do that or can't, does the planning commission have to look at it first?
No, they don't.
And then it comes back to us?
No, they don't. Counsel can make any recommendations and send any department in this, in the city.
So, just to clarify, you want to do, you want to refer it as is without seeking the opinion of the attorney?
We don't need a legal opinion to send this down to our planning commission. All the legalities can be worked out in planning.
By whom?
Excuse me?
By whom would, who would work out the legalities when it gets to planning?
Planning commission is not going to move forward without seeking the city attorney's opinions on this and that and anything else before it comes back up here. The legalities can be worked out in zoning.
So, basically, your motion is what the staff recommendation is?
The whole entire resolution is designed, is written to send to planning.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm asking. So, your motion is to send it to planning and have the city attorney give them a legal opinion?
He will give them a legal opinion, he thinks, by November the 15th.
So, that, okay. So, I was unclear on what you're moving. Okay.
And I'm going to take this young lady up on her assistance of her time to put her input in. Is there a second?
The, I want to make sure we're all clear on how we're moving forward. I said I can have city council an opinion by our next meeting, which I think we're looking at, I know we've said November 9th, but I think now due to some conflicts, it may be November 15th. I can have a, I can have an opinion back to council by November 15th. Then depending on what that opinion says, you know, I think determines which way the council would move with this motion.
And the next planning commission meeting is Monday?
The 21st.
November 21st.
So, just-
What is the scope of your opinion as to whether or not we have the authority to send this down?
No.
Or do, is your scope going to be-
Whether or not the city has the authority to implement a zoning ordinance as presented by this resolution.
Okay, that can come at a later date. Tonight, the request is to send this down to zoning to be looked at.
I understand that. I think your council members are the ones asking the questions of what they want.
I'm just trying to, I just want to be clear because, you know, like the mayor said, in principle, you know, I'm fine with this, but I need to know, just because I'm about to second it, I need to know what we're seconding. So, rather than having a motion to send it to planning pending the city attorney giving us, giving us a legal opinion, the motion is to send it to planning and have the city attorney give them the legal opinion, right?
Yeah, but I'm almost positive you're going to get more than one written opinion.
I mean, that's fine, but, but I mean, that's, because we just want to cover our bases and, you know, for lack of a better term, cover our butts, you know, with this. So, I mean, that's what your motion is, to send it to planning and have the city attorney give them the legal opinion instead of coming back to us?
Counsel, I want to caution you. If you want outside legal opinion, then you hire it. If you want my opinion, that's what I'm here for. You, there's going to be plenty of attorneys on both sides of this issue that can make a good argument one way or the other. My job is to make sure the city does not get itself in any further legal issues than we already are. I mean, this council knows well enough. We've got lawsuits pending with BBU, pending with Bristol, Tennessee. My job is to protect us from getting involved in lawsuits and there's plenty of attorneys out there. I'm sure there's some in this room that can sit here and tell you why we should implement these restrictions and I'm sure we can find plenty of attorneys elsewhere outside of this room that can tell you why we cannot. So, ultimately, if you all want the opinion of another attorney, then I would suggest you get the opinion of another attorney. But I'm here to protect the city and if you want my opinion, I'll give that to you, but I'm not exactly sure why we want to have competing opinions potentially. It may be the same opinion, but why would we potentially have competing opinions and then be having this discussion? What do we do?
Well, in your analysis, you'll take a look at all sides of that to try to put that together to come up with your opinion.
Yes.
So, the motion is to move it forward to planning commission, look at the legal side of it as well, and that's, that's the motion and a-
That's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, second.
All right. So, let me understand. It will go to the planning commission, but when, you will still present that legal?
I'll present the opinion November 15th.
And so, depending on what, will that have any, I mean, I guess, what we're saying is, I guess, depending that it's a favorable opinion, then the planning commission will take it on the 21st, but if the opinion is, this is something we can't do, then they wouldn't take it up?
That would, if that's what my legal opinion is, that it can't be done, then my legal advice to planning commission is you can't take it up.
So, but you would, okay, so, you'll present the opinion to us, but then the planning commission will take it up and then that's how you'll start is with whatever?
And the process is, the planning commission looks at it, public hearing, planning commission votes, and then we-
The planning commission is a recommendation for yes or no and then it comes to the council for the ordinance, yes?
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't, I guess, so there's, the legal opinion will take place. That's what I'm most concerned about is, again, that we understand this before we take action. But it sounds like, am I missing something there that there will be the legal analysis beforehand?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's no further council discussion, we do have a motion in a second to move this forward to the planning commission and also look at the legal opinion as well. So, we do have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Before we move to our next item, we are going to take a five-minute recess. We are back in session and our next item, the old item three, because we did postpone item two, this is the public hearing for CDBG program year 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER. So, I hereby open our public hearing and nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so we'll move into staff report.
Okay, thank you and good evening to everybody. The city of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal community development block grant funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viably urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment and by expanding economic opportunities principally benefiting low to moderate income persons. All entitlement monies received are dispersed through the city's CDBG program. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, better known as CAPER, for the city's CDBG program is an annual assessment of the city's performance in meeting its priorities and objectives of its five-year consolidated plan and program year annual action plan. This report is being brought before the city council for public comment prior to its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, I just, I made up a brief presentation to show how the funds were used in the past year, which ended June 31st of this last year, and I've also provided you all a copy with it in case you can't see this or I go through it too quick and you want to look at it a little bit more closer. So, this year, we received 269,320 CDBG entitlement grant funds for the year. 240,601 were spent. This includes any carryover that we had from previous years. Nine public service agencies were provided 42,563 and 5 cents to carry out activities benefiting LMI, which is low to moderate income persons in the city, which is basically 80 percent, they earn 80 percent of median family income. This leveraged approximately 1.9 million to fully operate their programs. Public service agencies also leveraged a total of 1,903 volunteer hours valued at just under $57,000. Okay, so during this year, 10 homes were rehabbed, four blighted properties were demolished, 158 uninsured individuals received medical care and prescriptions, 120 individuals received job skills training, and 42 were placed in jobs. 86 neglected and/or abused children were provided assistance. Childcare and case management services were provided to 1,171 school-aged children. 13 chronically homeless men received housing and case management and 29 percent of the award from last year funded a portion of admin and code enforcement staff salaries. So, altogether, over 2,000 low to moderate income family members were provided direct services and 88 percent of monies spent benefited LMI. The threshold is 70 percent. Usually, this is a little bit higher, but since this year we demolished some properties, they're considered blight and do not contribute to the low to mod income percentage. Okay, we also are still using COVID-19 CDBGCV funding for activities. Altogether, we received two rounds totaling 200- Altogether, we received two rounds totaling $275,016. We have spent 152,074 and 55 cents to date. All the monies have been allocated, they just haven't been spent yet. $57,624 went to public service agencies serving low-to-moderate income individuals in the city. $6,500 went to housed and quarantined homeless during COVID-19. A little over 61,000 went to pay for delinquent utility bills and provide food vouchers to those households financially affected by COVID-19. The remainder has gone to admin and emergency rental assistance. Okay, and I always like to show you just some of the rehabs that we did during, during the year. Like I mentioned before, we did 10, but this is three households that we helped. This is Beaver Drive. It's home to a mentally disabled adult male. We did window replacements, and he had no heating and air system. As you can see, there's a little electric heater in his walls, that's all he had, so we were able to do that for him. Also was a senior who's basically aging in place. She was on Bradley Street, so we were able to make her front steps more accessible for her. We gave her a new walk-in shower, we replaced her backstorm door, and replaced her commode. And then this one is on Fairmont Avenue. Again, this is one of our seniors, and we add an accessible ramp and also a walk-in shower for her. So that's just a brief description of what we've done during the year, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
A couple of questions, but first, thank you, this is a good report. It's always good to see how, how well these funds are spent and, and the different things that you do. And sometimes people don't realize all that community development block grants can be used for and the different ways you can really make a community better. Three things. First, the, this is the, for the program year, is that the same as the federal fiscal year, or is-
No, basically it is a fiscal year, but the CDBG program runs from July 1st through June 30th.
Okay, so it runs on the state?
So this period, this is from the past year, so this ended June 30th.
And I know you said you still have CV, COVID, CV funds, although they've been allocated. Can you remind us when the, the drawdown date, that those have to be committed?
We have a few more years. The issue right now is I have allocated the funding, but they're not being spent. Basically because COVID is not really financially impacting people as much now. So they've been allocated to the United Way and to the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and we've gotten to the point where they're not utilizing them. Both of those contracts end at the end of the year, so at that time, I or we will discern whether or not to reallocate them for some other use.
Okay. And then the last, and you mentioned, showed pictures of, and mentioned rehab, and, and I think that's something, again, people don't really realize is, is something that these can be used for, and I think a very good use of that money. It's a lot of hoops and hurdles to jump through, to rehab a property, but, but again, a good use of the money. And you showed 10, and I was just curious about the demand. I mean, is there like a waiting list? Is there much more than, than you can get to with what you have?
So I do have a waiting list. It's not as much as I had the year before. Luckily, or not luckily, but intuitively, we have allocated more money this year than we ever have in the past for home repair. And I haven't gotten any new allocations recently, so we may catch up with that waiting list.
That'd be great.
Yeah, but typically it just kind of, they come in constantly without having to do much marketing, so. But at this point, if I didn't get any more applications in, we'd probably be able to complete all of them.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you for this presentation, and, you know, I, I think as, as Councilman Hartley said, you know, it's fantastic, there were 2,100 LMI families, or LMI family members who were able to get some kind of help in some way or the other. You know, this, this is the kind of thing that, that flies under the radar quite a bit, but this is a good news headline. You know, this is, this is very good news for the city, and I know you, you work a lot of untold hours doing this and coordinating this, so thank you. And, and I'm glad that we're able to help these people.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. Everything you do with this, with this, the CDBG funds, you know, this goes directly to help people. And a lot of times it goes unnoticed, people don't even know it's happening sort of behind the scenes, but you're directly, directly affecting, helping families in our city with, with what you do, so we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the program.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. The next item is approval of bid being awarded to Summers Taylor Incorporated for solid waste cover, intermediate cover for the remainder of fiscal year, October 26, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Just to clarify one item, Reverend Weddington, I know you did sign up and you wrote landfill. If you'd like to speak with this item, you can. The next few items are all concerning the landfill, so if you'd like to do it now, that's perfectly fine.
Reverend Dr. Samuel Weddington, I'm a member of the Bristol Area Administrative Alliance. I'm also the senior pastor of the First Presbyterian Church of Bristol, Tennessee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on a long night, and I'll try to make my words short. It's simply this, I do actually want to congratulate the city on the number of milestones that you've hit recently. You know, the fact that the, the landfill is closed, that you have done the good work with the cover, and you are in fact going to be taking votes to continue that work. There are new drilling that's going to start to get the thermocouples in, the sidewall mitigation. These are all wonderful mile markers, and again, I actually want to congratulate you on that work, and I know it's expensive, and there's a long road ahead even from this point forward. That being said, we are getting ready to begin this new work on the sonic drilling to get the thermocouples in. The sidewall mitigation is going to be really ramping up. And if you remember last year when the drilling went on, it actually kicked the odors up because you're actually exposing, you're drilling down into waste that's, you know, 10 years in the past, what have you. As you go deeper, you sort of go back in time, right? And that means that it is likely that the odors are going to get worse, even significantly worse, as the work, the good work that's necessary to fix this goes forward. And now I think as you get ready to appropriate great sums of money to begin fixing these portions of it, I once again want to renew my call to the city to consider the residents and the relief efforts that you might extend to them. If you, if we're walking into this knowing that the smells are going to be worse for 30, 60, 90, 120 days, then I do think it's incumbent on the city to maybe make another appropriation and buy air purifiers and take other steps to help residents out. You know, when it comes to First Presbyterian and with our partners at Bama and other folks and donors in the area, you know, we gave out about 1,100 of them, and I'm tapped out. I don't have any more money to do it. And that was a pretty big push, you know, for us. You know, there, we can get you the really nice air purifiers for 150 bucks, you know, at the 10th of the retail price. The partnerships are to be had in this area with actually companies in Bristol, Virginia. And, you know, with $100,000, you can buy a whole lot of purifiers and distribute that to residents to help them with the necessary next steps that need to be undertaken in order to deal with the landfill effectively. Because there are a lot of folks, especially new folks that are moving into the area, that are learning about all of this. They need to be equipped to deal with this because it is going to probably get worse before it gets better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend Weddington. Thank you. The, that was the last person to sign up for public comment, so we'll move into staff report.
The bid process began with the invitation to bid for the solid waste cover, intermediate cover. The ITB was placed on the city's website in EVA, Virginia's electronic procurement site on September 14, 2022, and closed on October 12, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. Two responses received, and the recommendation, recommendation is to the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Okay. And what's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the, of the bid by Summers Taylor, Inc. for solid waste cover, intermediate cover for the remainder of fiscal year 2022 through June 2023.
And just so you know, the per cubic yard amount was $37.50 by Summers Taylor.
Okay.
Second.
So we do have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I have a question that is more for clarification for the public and, and those watching at home. We have, we received two responses, and, you know, per state law, we take the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. And basically that means that if we have five responses and two of them are qualified, we don't look at the other three. We only look at the ones that are deemed feasible responses, right? And so, so both of the people that were responsive bidders would be qualified to do the job, so that way we just take the lowest priced one.
Correct.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion for this item, we do have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item is the approval of bid being awarded to Baker's Services, Inc. for solid waste cover clay cap for the-
Counsel, real quick, we need a reason for the abstention on that.
Well, I don't believe-
And that's just for the minutes?
It's okay. I'm gonna be totally honest here. I'm not comfortable voting to spend untold amounts of money that we should not have to spend because nobody wanted to listen to maintain that landfill while it was in operation. Everybody sat on their hands and waited till lawsuits came, and now we are gonna lose money hand over fist. I'm opposed to spending the money on the backside of this in an astronomical form when we should have spent the money on the front end maintaining what we have. There's my explanation. You got a Florida one abstain. It's gonna go through. You got your money.
Well, state code requires a reason for the abstention.
There it is.
The next item is the approval of bid being awarded to Baker's Services, Incorporated for solid waste cover clay cap for the remainder of the fiscal year, October 22, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Bid process began with the invitation to bid for the solid waste cover, the clay cap. The invitation to bid was placed on the city's website, EVA, on September 14, 2022, and closed October 12, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. Two responses received, and the recommendation is to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which was Baker's Construction Services at $44.26 cubic yard.
Okay. All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the bid to Baker's Construction for solid waste cover clay cap for remainder fiscal year through June 30, 23.
Second.
Okay. So just to clarify, the clay cap has to do with, and we discussed this a little bit earlier, the landfill, 498?
So, go ahead, go ahead. So I need intermediate cover for different uses at the landfill, and then I need clay cap, which has different specification for different projects and landfills.
Okay.
So it's for both 588, 498.
Okay, all right.
So it's for, so it's not just for cover, it's, it's for, for cover, and then also for, as we posted on our website, talking about the, the sidewall odor mitigation?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's clay needed for different projects, including the solid wall mitigation.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion for this item, we do have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain for the same reasons stated earlier.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item is approval of bid being awarded to Summers Taylor, Inc. for solid waste cover topsoil for the remainder of the fiscal year, October 26, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
The bid process began with the invitation to bid for the solid waste cover topsoil. The ITB was placed on the city's website in EVA on September 14, 2022, and closed on October 12, 2022 at 2:00 p.m. There were three responses received, and the recommendation is to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Summers Taylor for $44 a cubic yard.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the bid awarded to Summers Taylor for solid waste cover topsoil for remainder of fiscal year, '22 through June 30, '23.
Second.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second.
Ask the question, Mr. Chairman. I know these bids go through the end of the fiscal year because that's our budget year.
They go through the end of the fiscal year, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so do, do you anticipate that, that we'll have any more items like this? Or would these three cover us as far as cover, or are there going to be additional bids you're going to have to put out?
There'll, there'll be additional projects over the upcoming months, several months to a couple of years, so you'll probably see this in May and June when we do our stone and asphalt and concrete bids again. So you'll probably see the clay cap, the air meat cover, and topsoil as well.
Okay. I was just trying to get some sense of what to anticipate later on.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, so if there's no further council discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain for the same reasons pointed or, uh, mentioned earlier.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item is the Solid Waste Disposal Fund Financial Update. We do not have anyone who's signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Counsel, I know you've heard me talk quite a bit over the past, well, for a couple of years as it relates to the costs associated with this landfill and what it's going to cost the city to fix. And if you recall, in the spring of 2018, I stood here before council, and I advised council that this landfill would cost us more than the falls ever will, and we're well on our way. As you know, we closed the landfill on September the 9th, so we lost commercial haulers at that point, and we lost revenue from commercial haulers. We also have a significant number of projects that are ongoing that require extensive engineering and consulting services, and that is expensive. So over the next several months, we'll be back before you seeking supplemental appropriations to cover many of these costs as we move forward, and I just want to give counsel an update as to where we are. So this is the original budget that we had this past year for disposal fees, was right at 3.35 million. Right now, we've projected we'll have $508,000 total for disposal fees, so we will be at a shortfall of $2.841 million. Our mulch and compost is now by the wayside. We will, we'll lose 28,603 with that. And then landfill gas, we anticipate, well, that's projected as of right now, 3,600. That does not include the full year, but at the moment, we would be behind $5,700, depending on how the landfill gas plays out. At the moment, Injinko is not running, I believe, is it? They're still not running? There was an incident at the landfill that has taken their system offline, and they are not able to run gas at the moment, so we are flaring all the gas. So you can see our revenues for the year are going to be down $2.875 million. And you've got to make that up somewhere, so you try to make it up on the expense side. And our salaries and wages are going to be down roughly $360,000, and that's because we will not be filling certain positions that are, that are vacant at the moment. Currently at the landfill, we have three office staff, two environmental and safety staff members, one project manager, five people who are machine equipment operators and laborers, one administrative manager, and seven vacancies. So we are operating on a skeleton crew as it relates to taking care of the work at the landfill. We are using a lot of public works people as well. So we have a couple of choices. We can either continue staffing as it is. We can add that staffing back, knowing that that will increase expenses, which will further exacerbate our budget going forward. Or we could potentially lay off additional staff members- Or we could potentially lay off additional staff members out there as well. So the next line item, professional services, that is going to be roughly two point two million dollars more than we originally budgeted for this, for this. It's, the original budget was six hundred thousand dollars. We have an amended budget of one point four million as it stands right now. That one point four includes the four hundred thousand dollars that's coming up on the next agenda item, which leaves us at an expense roughly of two point two five million dollars that we have to make up. So total, we are looking at, I can't, let me look at my sheet here, five point three three eight million dollar shortfall. We have the option to come back and ask for one supplemental appropriation for that. That would not be my recommendation. I think we need to budget this every couple of months and come back in November with a specific amount that will get us through probably January and then come back in January and ask for another amount that will get us through March and vice versa as we continue out throughout the fiscal year. So you can see we've taken a big financial hit. As you all know, we do have funds. We're lucky that we've had a good. We're lucky we have a, had a good few years here in the city as it relates to our revenues over expenses. However, I can tell you based on these numbers here, we are looking at some very dire circumstances for the city as we continue to move forward through this project. That's just other financing sources that are not impacted. We still have the expert panel recommendations that we are going through and that we will be implementing. We have the sidewalk odor mitigation system. We have to improve our gas, current gas extraction wells by minimizing air intrusion. We have to have weekly service emission testing, install settlement plates, install thermocouples, install dedicated monitoring wells, install dual-phase extraction wells, install a geosynthetic cover after grading in order to have stormwater directed to the southeast corner. I would also say that this geosynthetic, geosynthetic cover would go in after the wells and everything are drilled because you do not want to drill through the geosynthetic cover. We need to develop and implement a stormwater and settlement management plan and implement a community outreach plan. We have started on basically the design of every single one of these items. And the cost, we do not know yet. I have an early projection of those costs. So those projects will be upwards of twenty million, probably closer to thirty. So we have a significant amount of funds that we're going to have to spend over the next year in order to accomplish all these goals as quickly as we possibly can. Any questions?
Yeah, I have to ask. I mean, you're projected right off. That's a scenario right now that you're coming up with is twenty to thirty million dollars to get this landfill under control. Money's gotta come from somewhere. And from compensation. Can you walk us through how you see this playing out right now with the finances that we currently have with the monies that may or may not be available, the longer the number of them may? How do you see the city paying for all this?
It's gonna be very difficult.
Could you just walk us through your best analysis of how you foresee us getting to the end of this landfill?
As it stands right now, this does not include any money that we will be asking the general assembly for coming up. But we have roughly eight and a half million dollars of ARPA money that could go against that twenty to thirty million dollars. We have two million dollars that was allocated from the state through D E Q that should come to us at some point. So that's ten and a half million dollars. That leaves us roughly ten to, at a minimum, ten to eleven million dollars short, which would have to come out of our unassigned bal, unassigned fund balance, which right now stands roughly, I forgot the numbers. I looked at them the other day when Angel sent them. But it's going to take us right down to the limit that where we want to be at in order to operate without operating on a tan. And that's assuming it's twenty million dollars. That's not assuming that it could cost more than twenty million dollars. But that's, that's, that's the money that we have right now available to fix the landfill.
You know, I do think that we are very fortunate to have those monies available, you know, and as you kind of hinted around a little bit, I think it is of utmost importance that we be reaching out to the general assembly, be reaching out to the federal government and asking for any dollar they can send us, you know, because this is, you know, Bristol has made a lot of progress over the past few years, and we're off the tan, you know. When Ms. Bradlman was here, she would show us that, that slide that shows how far we had come. And I know our new CFO will do the same thing, I'm sure. But we've made a whole lot of progress, and we have to somehow keep that momentum going. And, and, you know, we can't, you know, we, we can afford if we spin down the unassigned fund balance to the bare minimum. But ideally, I wouldn't want to do that. So I think it is of utmost importance that we, you know, hit up the federal government, hit up the state government for any dollar they can send us.
Well, and I also reiterate, this five million dollar difference that we see right now, we're going to have to make that up again in the next fiscal year. I mean, we're still not going to have the revenue. We're still going to have the expenses. So there's an additional five million that's coming from somewhere in order, at least five million that's going to come from somewhere to pay for just the normal operations of the landfill.
Weirdly.
And, and that, I would like to ask, and if everybody's all right, that, I mean, you're making this presentation now, our CFO, I think at the next meeting will make our quarterly, that you marry these two together and at least once a quarter, give us a similar presentation, probably at the same night or very shortly after the, the general financial. So we see both how the city's doing, how landfill's doing. And I think just on an ongoing basis, at least that much. And as you said, we'll have appropriations in between, but it, it'd give us a good handle on this. One thing I would like to see, and I'm sure as we get into the budget, it, it will become more evident as well, is a breakdown between one time and recurring expenses. Because I see some of those line items that, as you point out, are recurring. Those trouble me a lot more than the one time. I mean, because the things you mentioned, the sources of funding and appropriation from the general assembly, a grant, a federal earmark, ARPA money, that's one time money. And, and that can go to these one time expenses. It's the recurring expenses and making up that gap on an ongoing basis that's going to be the real challenge that we face in the years to come. You know, with that, I, I think, you know, as you develop these timelines and cost estimates, both to share with us and, and I know you'll share with state, federal agencies and, and representatives. And, and that can help as well. I think the more of this you can get before general assembly meets, the, the more, the more specific you can be in the ask, the better chance we stand of, of getting funds.
I agree. And just to touch on recurring costs, like you say, there are a lot of recurring costs that's going to continue for an extended period of time associated with this landfill. And that scares me more than, like you say, than the one time cost. But just some of these items here, the sidewalk odor mitigation system, that's going to be a recurring maintenance issue for the city for years to come. Because we've got to continue to maintain that sidewalk odor mitigation system going forward.
And, and, and I guess some of these too, the timing, because when you say thirty million, I assume you're taking all these and aggregating it. We're, we're not going to have the outlay of funds in one. Well, I know we won't in at least one, two, it'd be over two fiscal years, more than likely three. So kind of planning and anticipating that. And that can also help with trying to track down other sources of funding, knowing what, you know, may not get it in this fiscal year, but it can be next or even in a, in an out year and to try to wrap this up so that we can see where we're at. I think that.
I don't think that we have a couple of three fiscal years based on.
Okay, so it's just this year and next year?
This year and early part of next fiscal year.
Okay.
That these, these things will have to be expanded.
Again, I, I don't, haven't seen the timeline, how quickly things get implemented. I know they have to be designed and bid and, 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 and sequenced. I mean, there's certain, you can't do all ten items at once.
Right. And that's, you know, that's one of the issues is, you know, which ones should come before another one? And how do you time those out so that you're always moving forward? We do have a plan in place that will have these timed out so that as we finish one project, another project that piggybacks on top of that previous project will come right in along behind it. You know, it's my goal to have these things completed as quickly as possible. We know the community is suffering from the odor of the landfill, and it's, we've got to fix it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
The only thing I just wanted to, to say is, you know, obviously, we, we know the issues we've had at the landfill. We know the issues that are still ongoing, and, you know, our, our community knows about it, both inside the city limits and outside the city limits. You know, having this conversation about the financials, you know, obviously, you know, Bristol, Virginia, we've been through the gauntlet with financials. You know, going back to even some things that happened before any of us were here. You know, borrowing eighty five million dollars for retail development, borrowing money for operating the landfill back in the day. Even just this evening, we were speaking about the need for new police cars. So, so we do have expenses, but, you know, every time we've had a, a tough issue, we've been able to work hard and figure it out. So I do know that these numbers, just the financial side of it, do not look good. But I'm, I know what we need to do, and we know what we have to do. And I'm still confident that we'll be able to figure it out. It doesn't look good, and it's not going to be a fun conversation. It's not going to be a fun conversation when we do our next budget. But, I mean, and several of us, the ones that have been here the longest in the past, they've had, they've made tough financial decisions years ago, and they were unpopular. But you all did that and put us on the right track, got us back on track. So it, we're going to have to have some tough conversations, I think, going forward in the months and years, but I'm still confident overall.
Before we leave this, will you, will you take a minute, both of the people here and anyone listening, to mention the upcoming event next week so people can learn, get a better?
Sure. Yeah. On November first, from six to seven thirty P M., we'll be having an open house here. That's part of the community outreach plan that has been recommended by the expert panel report. So we will have two experts that were both on the expert panel that was convened by D E Q. They will be here to answer questions from the community as, and to answer any other questions. And I'll, I'll be here as well to answer questions for the community as well if they have any questions for me. But that is on November first from six to seven thirty P M. here in council chambers.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next item is our supplemental budget appropriation totaling four hundred thousand dollars. There was no one who signed up for public comment for this item, so we'll move into the staff report.
Thank you. This item is to appropriate additional funding from the general fund to pay for professional services incurred by the solid waste fund. Those would include wastewater sampling in the amount of seventy four thousand dollars, monthly topographic surveys for ninety one thousand, South Leach Eight cleanout improvement for two hundred thousand, and equipment rental and supplies of thirty five thousand dollars. As Mr. Eads indicated earlier, we will bring back additional appropriations as they are needed. This is the one that is needed for the immediate requirements for the landfill and the solid waste fund. Those total four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation for four hundred thousand dollars for the item stated.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further council discussion? We do have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item is our first reading for our ordinances. Item E one, an ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located on Veda Drive, Everett Street, Gate City Highway, and Andover Drive. Nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Yes. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just gonna move forward to the one slide that shows the proposed zoning map amendment area. So the proposal is to amend the city of Bristol zoning map to change multiple properties from R two, which is single and two-family residential, and O I, office and institutional, to B three, general business district. The joint public hearing was held on October eleventh, twenty twenty two. It was advertised in accordance with city and state code, or, and state code. The planning commission recommended the zoning map amendment to the city council for approval at its October seventeenth, twenty twenty two, meeting by five to nothing vote. The land is a mix of residential and vacant properties. As I mentioned before, the existing zoning is R two with a very small area of O I. The size of the site is approximately forty five acres. And the future land use map designation was single-family attached professional office. The property currently being used for residential would be allowed to remain as residential under section fifty dash eight, non-conforming uses buildings and structures. So just to explain this again, if the property were rezoned to business, to B three, and the property owner wishes to keep their residence or even to sell their, the property and to be further used as a residence, they have that vested right. The property would have to be vacant for a period of two years before those vested rights would go away and it would revert to the existing zoning. If the property was destroyed by act of God, weather, or something like that, they would have two years to get those building permits to rebuild the property. If the property were converted to a use that is only allowed in the B three and no longer in the R two, then it would have to stay in that B three. There are twenty single-family houses on Veda Drive and two duplex units. There are nine single-family houses on Everett Street and seventeen duplex or multifamily units. The remainder of the property is vacant. The characteristics and the descriptions of a B three zone. The purpose of the B three district is to provide a place for business uses that do not require a central location. It shall provide areas for the development of retail and personal service, commercial, community, and regional shopping centers of integrated design and high-density development of commercial businesses in certain areas adjacent to major transportation arteries or thoroughfares within the city. And you have a list in your staff report of all those uses that are allowed in the B three. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, the two thousand and seventeen adopted plan, this plan addresses future commercial development of the former Bristol Mall site. However, casino had not been in the works when this plan was approved. Objective number one of the Commercial and Employment Area Framework Plan one A encourages promotion of commercial reinvestment on Gate City Highway. Objective five encourages leveraging Bristol's many unique assets to increase tourism and visitors to the city. Future land use map, which is updated and revised in two thousand and nineteen, shows the subject property as single-family detached and professional office. This is defined as homes that are standalone units with one unit per parcel. Because of the opening of the casino, the entire Gate City Highway corridor is likely to change in the next comprehensive plan and future land use plan update. That R F P has been advertised, is beginning to be advertised. So we're hoping to have a consultant to start the interviews with consultant and hopefully have somebody by the end of the year where we can start this process in two thousand and twenty three. The staff reports were mostly positive for the rezoning, the proposed rezoning. There were some comments from B V U when it came to water and sewer issues. Basically, further development in that area would require extension of water. It would require extension of sewer. Currently, it is fine the way it is. If property were developed as commercial, these types of, these utilities would have to be extended into this area. Now, the casino is working with B V U right now as part of their upgrade plans to go from the Bristol Casino to Hard Rock Casino. So a lot of this is being done now and through the site plan process. So as far as the conclusion, the recommendation, consistency with the comprehensive plan, the proposed location is in the exit one area of the city, which is primed for a surge of new economic development. The existing Bristol Casino and the expected opening of the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino in two thousand and twenty four is certain to transform this area of the city. As earlier mentioned in the staff report, the idea of the casino had not yet been presented. plan should remain flexible enough to allow for creative approaches to land development that are consistent with the policies and guidelines included in the comprehensive plan. An update of this plan and the 2019 land use plan, as I mentioned, is expected to begin by the end 2022, beginning of 2023, and then is expected to be completed next year. This area of the city promises to be one of the primary areas of focus in the new plan. Compatibility with surrounding uses, the subject property and the immediate surrounding uses are a mix of single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and office uses. The zoning map amendment will not inhibit the ability of the existing landowners on Veda Drive or Everett Street to continue using their property for residential for as long as they wish. The zoning map amendment will also not require existing landowners to upgrade their property or their infrastructure for the current use. The amendment does give the landowners additional options in case they do wish to sell their property, since it could be sold for either a residential or commercial use. The amendment also provides more options for the development for the casino on property they have acquired, which should result in additional economic development for the city. Following the evaluation of the application, staff recommends that the zoning map amendment be approved on first ordinance reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Thank you. So, we are looking for a motion from our council to have the first reading of the ordinance, and this can be by caption only.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I'll just jump in and say, the only question I have, we discussed a little earlier, we've tried to get as much feedback as possible from residents, owners within this area. Any comments we've received from anyone in the surrounding area? Any adjoining property owners, neighbors who-
No. We sent out those property owner notices, both to the adjoining property owners and to the property owners who would be affected by this. The comments that I received were just, what's going on and what exactly does this do? And there was nothing really positive or negative. It was just, they were just trying to gather some information.
Okay.
But I only received maybe three or four phone calls on that, too.
Okay. All right. We do have a motion and a second, so if there's no further council discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Next is the reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Okay. Ordinance number 22-17, an ordinance by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, approving a request to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential, R2, to general business district, B3, for property described as tax map parcels. 22-2-1-4A, 5, 5A, 6, 6A, 7, 8, 8A, 9. 22-2-2-2A, 3, 4, 5, 5A, 6, 7, 7A, 8, 8A, 9, 9A, 10. 22-7-1-10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. 22-7-2-11 and 12. 374-1-B, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. 413-1, 18, 24, and 25. 413-1, 6, 2, and 3. 413-5, 1. 414-A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7A, 7B, 8, 9, 10. 414-2, 2, 13, 14, 15, and 16. And a request to amend the city zoning map from office and institutional, OI, to general business district, B3, for property described as a portion of tax map parcel, 414-A, 12.
You got them all. Thank you.
Man, that was about as brutal as the-
There we go.
Apologies, I just wanted to be very specific.
What about that genealogy of the Old Testament? It rolls, it rolls.
Thank you.
No begets, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the next item of our agenda is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agendas. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, personnel, and consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, BRTN, the BRVA, legal. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move that we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene in executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.[1753.63]